Hello, everybody. Just getting everyone admitted here. All right, just getting everybody's attendance down real quick here. I'll be getting started in just a sec here. Getting everybody. All right, looks like I've got just about everybody who is here today. Marked down, so we'll get started. I do apologize to those of you in fourth block in our six block class, we didn't get as far. So you will get a little bit of a review here as we go over some of the same slides. So we are starting today at Benjamin Banneker. But without further ado, I think we'll get started. So um make sure nobody's got this yet. Benjamin Banneker is one of the very important black contributors to our nation's early history and definitely needs to be considered one of our leading lights. He is a brilliant mathematician and inventor who helped George Ellicott when he was surveying the site for Washington DC as we discussed. And so and again, this kind of you know, in fourth block, we did discuss how, you know, Thomas Jefferson often gets this really bad rap when it comes to his treatment of black people because of his relationship with Sally Hemings. But in this particular instance, he's actually very generous in his treatment, I guess you could say, Benjamin Banneker, because he kind of goes against the prevailing sentiment of the times, which was that only white men were capable of, you know, the 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 mental prowess needed to be part of the Enlightenment. And he actually takes a copy of the almanac that Benjamin Banneker had written and sends it to the Academy of Sciences in Paris with with an introduction, a very complimentary introduction. So Monsieur de Condorcet receives this and recognizes Benjamin Banneker's abilities even in Europe. So we can consider Benjamin Banneker to be one of the members of the Enlightenment as a result. Banneker then finds some fame as a part of that and ends up using his fame to push for the abolition of the very institution that many of our founding fathers based their wealth on, which was slavery. So Benjamin Banneker, again, very important. And for those of you who we've already covered, you know, again, as you're just joining us, just realize that in fourth block, we got a little further than we did in sixth block. So that takes us to the Whiskey Rebellion. And Ethan, I believe this is your slide.
Yeah, this is my slide.
All right, so
Okay, so basically, after the whole debt crisis with the Articles of Confederation, you know, Alexander Hamilton helped accrue a national debt, and there had to be a way to start paying that off. And one way that they did it was a tax on whiskey. Well, it's called the whiskey tax, but it was a federal tax on all distilled spirit, but American whiskey consumption was rising to the point to where it was just widely known as whiskey tax. So specifically, this was bad because during the war, the US government tried to implement a currency, but it kind of went under. So in service of that, southern states and also states like Massachusetts and Pennsylvania used whiskey as a trade medium because it was easy to make because farmers could use their leftover grain to distill it.
It's almost like a currency in and of itself, like a bartering tool.
Yes, and there I think there is two types of taxes. There is a flat tax and a by gallon tax. Big distilleries could afford to pay the flat tax while small farmers had to pay the by gallon. And many farmers took this as targeting specifically poor class Americans. And whiskey was also important because it was a way for, you know, farmers could could generate extra income outside of just their crops. Specifically on the Western frontier, this was, yeah. It was like so common that you could barely even see anything that wasn't traded for whiskey.
Okay, so let's get to the actual rebellion itself. What happens? I mean, obviously, Americans do not like taxes. And you can draw the parallels between the reaction that, you know, the colonists have towards Britain's imposing of taxes and now this new central government with its, you know, increased level of power is leveling attacks and kind of almost getting the same reaction in a lot of ways. So tell us what happens.
So specifically, if it affect though it affects farmers, a lot of the ones pushing for rebellion were war veterans from the Revolutionary War. And they claimed that it basically wasn't taxation without local representation. However, the federal government disagreed and said, oh, this is just our use of congressional powers. So throughout Pennsylvania, specifically near the later years of the rebellion in like seventeen
You're you're breaking up your your
Oh, breaking up.
Yeah, you're you're getting really stretched out there, but I think you're you're a little bit better now. So sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so throughout Pennsylvania, protests and violence were used to intimidate tax collectors. And, you know, it was the same usual tactic tactics of tar and feathering and or just, you know, burning their homes. The climax, though, happened when a US marshal had arrived to serve rights to distillers specifically in response. More than 500 men attacked the home of General John Neville, a tax inspector. Now, George Washington did not like a rebellion to, you know, basically say suck it to his own federal government. So in response to that, he signed a militia of almost 13,000 men down to Pennsylvania to arrest.
All right, so let me let me just stop you there for a second. Who's who's actually at the head of this this militia as they as they march into Pennsylvania? Who's the commander of this force?
Hold on a second.
It's actually President Washington himself. So this is one of only two times in our history that the president as commander in chief has actually like commanded an army in the field. And so this is, I mean, like you said, this is a test, you know, this is like, you know, is this federal government going to be one where it's weak, like the Articles Confederation government? And when the states don't like something, they can kind of thumb their nose and say, we don't want to do what you're asking, or is this federal government going to have some strength to it? Is it going to command some respect? And so here he goes with his 13,000 men. And as they're approaching Pennsylvania, where, by the way, the the rebels had actually forced a a local paper to, you know, say, to promote their anti-government rhetoric under a guy named Tom the Tinker, who kind of forced the Pennsylvania Gazette via threat of force to to publish essays in favor of it. What happens to this rebel force that was kind of terrorizing Pennsylvania to a certain extent?
I mean,
like they almost like, what was it? It was either Pittsburgh or Pennsylvania or or Philadelphia that they were going to march on and the city sent them a bunch of liquor in order to keep them from marching on them, and they got drunk instead. But what was the what was the the response of this militia now that there's actually a federal army coming their way?
I don't think I have I can't just was trying to keep it short here.
Okay, well, like, when Washington gets there, what happens?
Well, specifically, you know, resistance is fought meant that even though there's like 13,000 to 400, I think, at the time.
Right, so most of the rebel army had kind of, you know, they're like, oh crud. Big army under respected general like Washington was respected, not just as president, but as a general. And they just decided not to not to try to challenge them. So they kind of melt away. So it's not even a contest.
Resistances were still there's like small resistances still going on in Kentucky, but overall it demonstrated, obviously, the ability that the federal government could enforce its own laws, like physically, and can make sure that it's not just someone to push around.
Yes, and that's really important to underscore that this is the first test of federal authority. And Washington makes sure that he sends a message to the entire country that the federal government is not to be trifled with. Like, like, if you want to openly rebel against the federal government, you are going to be dealing with an army.
I have a quote, I have a quote from George Washington about him like enacting the militia.
Okay.
It's like, it's like, I, George Washington, President of the United States, in obedience to that to that high and irresistible duty, consigned to me by the Constitution to take take care that the laws be faithfully executed. You hereby declare and make known that a militia force, which is adequate to the exist exigency is already in is motion here.
Yeah, the exigency, which is just, you know, the the particular test that they were facing at the time.
I sent you my slide earlier. There's a link to a video and a fun picture I found on the second slide.
How is it a long video? Is it relatively?
It's three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay, sweet. Yeah. And by the way, 20 individuals are rounded up convicted of treason against the government and the and the punishment for treason is death. So like you, there's just a couple who are sentenced to death. I think it's like two of them. And then what does Washington do right at the last second before those sentences are to be carried out?
He pardons them because, you know, if they if they were to be sent to death, that would have like looked in a bad image to him. And they wanted, you know, he wanted to see that it's an opposing force that you do not disagree with, but forgiveness is also, you know, in their heart.
Kind of trying to bridge that whole, you know, gap between making everybody respect the federal government, but at the same time, not trying to seem too tyrannical and unjust. And so, yeah, and Washington is very good at at kind of bridging that gap. So let me let me search your name real quick here.
I sent it like 10:45 this morning.
Oh, so it'll be right at the top. Okay. All right, Whiskey Rebellion. Okay. Is within the slide. Oh, okay, I see. And then there's the YouTube link.
Welcome back, class. Now, one of the earliest tests of the US Constitution was the Whiskey Rebellion from 1791 to 94. What is the Whiskey Rebellion? Well, first off, it's not when you drink too much Jack Daniels and your stomach were bills against you. We better start at the Articles of Confederation. Under the Articles, some of the states like Massachusetts had accrued massive debts, which those individual states were responsible for. When the country decided to ditch the Articles in favor of the Constitution, these debts gave the new national government a credit score worse than a college freshman with a Visa, Amex, and H and M card. Alexander Hamilton knew the best way to deal with these debts was through assumption, which meant all states' debts would be consolidated into one national debt. Yes, thrifty states like Virginia complained about having to pay other states' debts, but it's funny how people get on board when you promise to place the capital in their backyard. So it's 1791 and time to pay the national debt of 75 million, which was about 2 billion back then. First, Hamilton turned to everyone's favorite topic tariffs. Ugh, I know students hate hearing about tariffs, but they really are important. They allow the government to make money on imported goods while at the same time protecting domestic goods. The second method was a tax on whiskey. Why whiskey? Well, whiskey was kind of money back then. Many Appalachian farmers distilled their excess grain into whiskey and sold it to supplement their income. Paper money was in short supply, and many were skeptical of a national currency, but whiskey was readily accepted as payment. And, well, it's alcohol. America has had a sizable BAC level since the beginning, and whiskey made money. As you can imagine, many small distillers had a problem with this tax. First, they didn't like the idea of a tax on their product to pay off someone else's debt. Secondly, you either paid a flat fee or buy the gallon. The large distilleries could afford the flat fee, but the smaller guys were stuck with the per gallon tax. Small operations saw this as the Constitution sticking it to the little guy. Some of those small operators in western Pennsylvania decided they weren't going to pay no stinking whiskey tax. Using techniques that echoed the revolution, they erected liberty poles, cried about taxation, and even tarred and feathered tax collectors. Things got progressively worse in western Pennsylvania between officials and opponents of the tax. When rebel leader and revolutionary war hero James McFarlane was killed, it was on. About 7,000 protesters marched towards Pittsburgh to burn it to the ground, shouting independence and even had their own flag. But you have to remember who was president at the time. That's right, George Washington. And he was ready to show these rebels that they weren't dealing with no weak Articles of Confederation central government. This was the US Constitution central government. All in all, nearly 13,000 men of the federal militia, many drafted, were led by President Washington himself to western Pennsylvania. And as you may expect, the insurrection quickly collapsed. A handful of men were hung for the Whiskey Rebellion, but more importantly, Washington and the federal government showed that under the Constitution, they had the power to enforce the law. So that's the Whiskey Rebellion. Leave a comment on what topic you'd like to see illustrated. Make sure you like, share, and subscribe. Be safe.
All right. Well, thank you, Ethan, for sharing that. And that covers the Whiskey Rebellion. Go back to it real quick here. All right. And that definitely kind of sets the tone for this new government. We had mentioned this before, but there was this small group of people who were taking the Enlightenment rebellion against Christianity and and kind of implementing it within their lives. And and these people are known as deists. So like we discussed during fourth hour on Friday, there we have kind of differing degrees of faith versus nonfaith. You have someone if someone believes in God is a is a theist. Someone who believes that there is no God at all is an atheist. But what do we what do we call those people who believe that there is a God who maybe quote wrote the laws of nature? But isn't a personal God who you have a relationship with? What do we call that?
Agnostic.
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 Yeah, agnostic. So we have at the time, the the people who were known as agnostic, who would be known as agnostic now, were actually called deists. And actually, some of our most prominent founding fathers were deists. And again, a lot of this is because this is the rage in Europe. So if you are heavily influenced by the European Enlightenment, which, you know, by this time had produced this rebellion in France, which would try to eventually erase the Catholic Church there and replace it with temples of reason and the cult of the supreme being. This, you know, this was an appealing philosophy. So Thomas Jefferson was a prominent DST. He actually, you know, saw the Bible as a great moral code, but didn't believe that a lot of the miraculous parts of it were actually true. So he deleted out all the things that he thought were not useful and kind of produced his own version of the Bible called the Jefferson Bible, which you can look up still. And Benjamin Franklin also probably one of the what you would consider the leading light in the Enlightenment from America because of his scientific accomplishments. He also was a pretty strong deist and kind of, you know, had these discussions with people who were much more oriented in their faith towards Christianity about, you know, salvation and all those things. And then, of course, probably the most prominent of all the deists in this country is Thomas Paine, former Anglican minister who became a firebrand of the revolution. And he actually released a book in three parts called The Age of Reason, which it was a celebration of what was happening in France. But it destroyed his popularity in the colonies because the colonies, well, the the states, the United States now, were very, very religious due to the Great Awakening. And this was not a popular point of view. Like, unlike where, you know, it would be in, for instance, revolutionary France. So, you know, another another prominent deist is Governor Morris, the guy who wrote the the words of the Constitution. So two of the founding fathers who gave us like the most immortal words of our founding documents, Thomas Jefferson with the Declaration and Governor Morris with the preamble to the Constitution were essentially, you know, deists. They rejected the doctrine of original sin. They denied that Christ was a divine being. And they denied that miracles actually happened. They kind of saw God as this great cosmic clockmaker, the guy who wrote the laws, because obviously, the universe is orderly and governed by laws. But they, yeah, and I see Zach, I see your hand. So and I was just going to finish this thought real quick. I don't know if you all are familiar with Baruch Spinoza, but this was kind of quote Spinoza's God. This this clockmaker deity who who wrote the laws to the universe like an intelligent designer, but and set it in motion, but did not have personal relationships with with individual people. So Zach, go ahead. What was your comment?
So was was the lack of a fully formed like Catholic bureaucracy in the New World kind of stopped from seeing the Second Estate Revolution we saw in France? Because I know I know the Catholic Church is set up differently than a lot of the Anglican and Calvinists that were in the New World and that they had more influence in government. So is that the kind of lack of Catholicism that kind of got drove out like we were talking about earlier? Couple weeks ago in Maryland kind of stopped there from being a revolt against, I guess, the Second Estate in the New World?
Well, that's an excellent question. You just have to remember how things were structured in France in particular. France was very heavily Catholic, and they had fought a long series of wars to remain heavily Catholic in the face of the Protestant Revolution called the Huguenot Wars, which many, you know, French nobles had become Protestant, you know, like their version of Protestantism was was Calvinism. And that had been stamped out for the most part. Those those people had been forced to flee, especially under King Louis XIV, the great, you know, the Sun King. So part of the reason that the Catholic Church was so married to the nobility in France was was this legacy of of the Huguenot Wars and kind of the church had depended upon the noble class for and the royalty especially for its survival in the face of the challenge of the Reformation, etc. So when the noble class needed something from the church, the church, you know, was always on their side. And so, yes, so the common people in France saw the church as a prop of the of the hated noble class with all of their heavy taxes and their their, you know, wild and you know, ridiculous levels of spending, which, you know, when you're starving and because of the heavy taxes that you have to pay, really, really kind of rubs you the wrong way. By contrast, in America, by and large, most of the the denominations were were where you could kind of interpret the Bible your own way. So the Christianity wasn't seen as a prop for this for, you know, the the various governments and or for the British government in that in that regard. Because really, the British government kind of had a Catholicism light type of church, which was the Anglican Church, which was pretty much everything was the same except for ritual wise, except for the the king being the head of the church rather than the Pope, plus King James had translated the Bible into English, you know, so people could interpret the Bible on their own and didn't really see the the church hierarchy as as this kind of opposing force that always supported like this upper class group. Does that answer your questions, Zach?
Yeah, I just I just kind of figured, but I wanted to like hear it.
Yeah, no, and I think that was an excellent question. But, yeah, it's really interesting to kind of dive into this, you know, this topic and and look at, you know, the level of faith that some of our founding fathers had. Now, many of our founding fathers are ardent Christians, like very, very ardent Christians. John Adams, in particular, comes to mind, George Washington, and and many others. So by and large, our founding fathers are very Christian. Deists are in the minority, not in the majority. So so don't get the wrong impression, but there are some prominent people who have kind of taken this this new way of looking things, which is really promoted over in Europe as as their their kind of approach to faith. The Northwest Territory War breaks out, and this is where you have a big confederacy, like a whole bunch of tribes who are basically going to fight the US government for control of the Ohio River Valley. This includes the Mingo, the Shawnee, the Delaware, the Ottawa, the Chipewa, the Potawatomi, and the Wyandotte under Chief Little Turtle and Chief Blue Jacket. And we start to find out that when the tribes unite, it's trouble, just like when when Pontiacs War, you know, pitted a large confederacy of tribes against the British. When you fight large confederacies of of natives who are very skilled when it comes to guerrilla warfare, they're a force to be reckoned with. And so they actually wipe out an entire force under Brigadier General Joseph Armar, which was sent to deal with them near what is now Cincinnati, what was called Fort Washington at the time. And then another force under Major General Arthur St. Clair was also defeated. So just like the Whiskey Rebellion, this is another test of the new federal government. The federal government has to pass this test in order to be legitimate. Because this is one of the reasons why all of the colonists have agreed to give the federal government its powers is because they need it for the common defense. And so President Washington takes this threat very seriously and gives the job of defeating this native coalition to General Mad Anthony Wayne of the Revolutionary War, who trains his force in anti-guerrilla warfare tactics in for two months solid before going out to face the native coalition. And they meet the native coalition under Blue Jacket at the Battle of Fallen Timbers. This is a big, important battle in our early history, and the US forces, due to their training and the leadership of General Wayne, are able to win this battle and force the natives to sign the and force the natives to sign the Treaty of Greenwill, which kind of opened up the entire Ohio River Valley to settlement. So you're gonna see large numbers of settlers pouring into the valley after the signing of this treaty. Now, uh, yes, Zach.
Okay, so would this um, I guess, show of power, you could call it, would that be a testament to the people of the colonies? Like the um, like the southern colonies and the northern colonies? Would that be just to show that the government actually does have a lot of power? Even though they're not like fully an army themselves, they can, like, they just have to get the people for it?
Um, you're saying, does this show that the federal like army is a capable military force? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't know how to word things.
Oh, that's fine. Um, I, I think that's a great, that's a great question. This is actually a really strong test of whether or not it's worth it to, to, to have this new government and to have this, you know, to give up the rights that, that the states had given up to this, this new constitutional federal government. Because, you know, as we discussed when we looked at the preamble, one of the functions of government is to provide for the common defense. And if this government can't do that, then what's the point of having this, this government? Where, you know, we've ceded some of our rights and given it so much authority. And so Washington knows that this is a test that he must pass, that the, that the federal government must pass. And so um, you know, just like with Pontiac's Rebellion, it is not easy to face large Native American confederacies. And so had it not been for the um, the, the very intense efforts of General Mad Anthony Wayne, the federal government may well have um failed this test and lost its legitimacy in the eyes of many of the states. And the, the constitution could have been, you know, you know, shredded, just like the Articles, Articles of Confederation were. Uh, so yeah, this is very important that, that the US Army actually passed this test. And now um, Washington faces another challenge. And this is um because of the changing nature of the French Revolution over in Europe. So in six, like, I know we discussed this already in Fourth Block, but in Sixth Block, um where we left off was that um uh the the new revolutionary government uh had arrested King Louis uh, you know, because he had tried to escape the country. Uh, but they were under the control of this National Assembly, which was comprised of two parties, the Gerondis who were uh more um uh moderate and then the Jacobins who were more radical. Well, um Louis was put on trial before the people of France and they found him guilty of uh uh basically being an enemy of the state uh and, and a traitor um in this, in this trial. And so his punishment was to be sent to the guillotine. And this is a big moment because um to execute a monarch as powerful as the, as the king of France is, is no small matter. And the other powers of Europe felt this intense uh fear that their own people were going to, you know, drink the, the, the Kool-Aid of democracy, so to speak, is the way, as how they saw it. And um, and, and want to kill them as well. And, and so when Louis is, is, is killed, all of the, the countries of Europe essentially joined together in this united coalition against France. Uh, and if you were taking AP Euro, this is, this would be the war known as the War of the First Coalition. But uh while all of this is happening, the, uh, there are ambassadors uh that the French government had sent out. And remember that in the France, the new, the new catchphrase is, is citizen. Everybody's equal. Louis was just reduced to the level of a citizen. So Citizen Genet uh was an ambassador. Uh, his name was Edmund Genet. He was a Gerondis. He was one of the moderates that was uh kind of part of this, this party that had a lot of influence at the time in um uh the National Assembly. And he reminded President Washington uh that we had actually made a treaty. Back when the uh um revolution took place, we had signed this treaty of alliance with France. And if France ever needed help, we were supposed to come to their aid. Why would this be a really bad idea at this point to come to the aid of France? Go ahead, Ethan. Ethan.
Sorry, um, it's a bad idea specifically because it's basically like every European country against France. And again, like they, the America just fought a war in the Northwest Territory.
And, and did we, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm gonna let everybody else. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna let everybody else answer here because I got a ton of hands before uh I uh, before I make any comments. Uh Faith, go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, if Britain and France got into another war, Britain basically let us off easy. We didn't really beat uh Great Britain. They just kind of said, well, we're kind of tired of fighting this. But if they saw us as another threat, they would probably be like, okay, this is just getting ridiculous and come back and fight us again.
Yeah, and possibly take us over. Like, Washington knew that we were not a match for the full strength of a lot of these uh European uh uh military powers, especially the powers of their navies. Uh, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
Uh, your voice cut out.
Yeah, you cut out for me too.
Oh, uh, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, um, I agree with Faith's point and I'd also like to add the fact that after Louis had been killed, things started spiraling.
Yes.
So it was best not to get involved.
Yes, uh, this new government, we're gonna talk about it in just a second, under Robespierre and the Jacobins, really takes things kind of off the deep end. Uh, Zach, what were you gonna say?
So America was already trying to pay off its debt from its original Revolutionary War, which has already caused the, some rebellions and they were already fighting the natives. So they were already in debt and were trying to figure out how to set up their economy and fighting another war against all of Europe would just put them in even more debt.
Yes, uh, and, and financially, it would have been an absolutely, you know, stupid move. Uh, that's an excellent uh additional point. Uh, and then Max, what were you gonna say?
We didn't win a war against Britain on our soil. They just gave up. Like, I, it's insane to think you would win a war against Britain and multiple other countries on foreign soil where, when you had just come off the back of a war that you didn't win. And like, and it's, yeah, it's also kind of crazy to support the Jacobins who literally just murder people because they feel like it. That's, and I, I, we gotta build credit as a country, but this is not the way to build credit as a country.
Right. And at the time that Citizen Genet is asking, the, the Jacobins have not yet seized full power and it had, we haven't gotten into the Great Terror yet. Um, but uh Zach, what were you gonna add?
Yeah, I just have one other thing that now that I'm thinking about it, thinking back to uh Common Sense when they were talking about trying to form a navy. I mean, there's a little bit of a problem that Europe is across an ocean. So if they actually wanted to help France in Europe, they didn't really have a navy that A, could transport them over there or B, get them over, once they got them over there, actually be able to get them onto land without just getting wrecked by the British Navy or the, literally any other navy in Europe.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is incredibly unwise um to get involved. Uh, Faith, I see your hand again. Uh, go, were you gonna make another comment?
Oh, sorry, I just forgot to put it down. I apologize.
And Max, I see yours as well. Did you want to say something else?
No, I just forgot.
Okay. Um, so it, yeah, and Washington knows that this is not gonna be popular with the people, but this is what presidents have to do. They have to weigh their own personal popularity and their own personal um, you know, career as a politician versus what's best for the country. And sometimes what's best for the country is, is the unpopular choice. And so um uh he rebuffs Citizen Genet. Uh, so Genet uh who kind of is still, you know, a, a guest here in the United States as the ambassador for this French government, uh starts to just go out and recruit people. And in, in the, in the American population, there is this fervor to help France, you know. There are brother, you know, democratic rebels, you know, they're fighting for democracy and freedom. They helped us when we needed help, you know, they're our ally, all of this stuff. And so um this really uh, you know, creates problems for Washington. And Genet is literally out there just deputizing people and sending them off to fight. Like, you know, kind of like what Benjamin Franklin would do over in Europe, uh where he would meet somebody and say, here's a letter of introduction. I hereby, you know, authorize you to be part of the Revolutionary Army and, and go, you know, uh introduce yourself to General Washington. And so uh American ships were, were being kind of deputized and, and sent off. And of course, this is a, this is a problem for us. But then things take a very ugly turn in France. And this is of course where democracy gets kind of a bad name, where you can see that sometimes democracy does get out of control. Uh, and the Jacobin party under uh, you know, Robespierre i- in particular um uh takes over. And after another Jacobin leader, Marat, is assassinated, um Robespierre kind of goes on this killing spree uh in the interests of getting rid of enemies of the state, people who wanna, uh, you, you know, take away uh the, the revolution and democracy from the people. And they are just executing people right and left, like thousands and thousands of people die in what is known as the Great Terror. I think the grand total is somewhere in the range of forty thousand people were sent to the guillotine before uh the, the, the reign of terror finally comes to an end. Uh, and when Robespierre himself is assassinated, so um, I'm sorry, he's not a sat, he, he is sent to the guillotine as well. Uh, so that kind of, that situation leads to a situation where Genet, who is a Gerondis, doesn't want to go back. Cause he's like, I know I'll be sent to the guillotine, because all these prominent Gerondis were being sent to the guillotine. Uh, and so he asked President Washington if he could stay. And after all the problems he had given Washington, Washington would have been well within his rights to say no, but Washington uh relents and says, yes, you may stay. And so he becomes uh kind of this political refugee in the United States, getting asylum here in our country. Faith, what were you gonna say?
Well, I was gonna say, um, in the French Revolution, it was kind of like the Salem Witch Trials, where if anybody said, hey, that person has had counter-revolutionary thoughts or whatever, you didn't even really get a fair trial. They just basically just put you before a judge and basically everyone just yelled at you and you were sent to the guillotine. You never actually got a fair chance to either defend yourself or anything like that. And you could just be standing there and if someone was suspicious of you, you were basically just killed.
Yeah, I mean, it was the tyranny of the majority, you know, like as long as you, there were enough people in the National Assembly who wanted to vote for your death. That was, that was the law. Like, whatever the National Assembly said was the law and they were just voting to kill people. Um, and so it was kind of death by popular acclamation. And ye- yes, you're correct, there is no fair trial. They, you know, killed Marie Antoinette um and uh after alienating her and her son. Uh, i- and it was, it was very sad. Um, just kind of, you know, and then they go on this, this killing spree where they're killing ma- many members of the noble class, even those who had like renounced their nobility and had tried to become a citizen and a, and a enthusiastic supporter of the revolution themselves. Um, the Marquis de Lafayette had to flee France in order to avoid being sent to the guillotine himself. Um, e- even though he was a huge supporter of democracy, so, and had been one of the co-authors of the um uh, the Rights of Ma- the Declaration of Rights of Man and Citizen, which was kind of their version of the Declaration of Independence. So um that was the Citizen Genet affair. Um, and we're gonna talk about how this will lead to a proclamation uh that, that Washington will, will make uh formally in a little bit. As we discussed in Sixth Block, uh, there were um a group of people who lived in the kind of disputed territory between New Hampshire and New York, which had been claimed by New York, um, wh- where the Green Mountains were. And um the Green Mountain Boys under Ethan Allen had actually provided some very important uh uh support for the Revolutionary Army during the war, uh being, you know, critical in, in things like the taking, taking of Fort Ticonderoga, et cetera. So um they kind of did what they wanted. They're like, you know, hey, you know, we contributed to the revolution. We should be able to run our own affairs. And they kind of had this little um like independent republic, the Republic of Vermont, uh which kind of derives its name from the Green Mountains, the Vert Mans. Um, and uh eventually, uh, you know, the, the United States had to do something because they tolerated this little, little independent republic for a while, but they're like, okay, how would you like to enter the Union as the fourteenth state? So Vermont becomes a four, the fourteenth state and comes in as a free state, which means it is a counterbalancing Kentucky, which came in as, is going to come in as a state where slavery is allowed. So the, the pouring of people through the Cumberland Gap, which had been discovered by Daniel Boone, uh, okay, ha- across from uh the colony of Virginia, I'm sorry, the state of Virginia, um led to this population swell. And um actually, uh, there had been a little independent country that had been created there as well called the uh Colony of Transylvania. Um, but when the Articles of Confederation government basically got control of all of the territory west of the Appalachians, um, uh, the Colony of Transylvania ceased to exist and, and became part of the um the federal territories. And, and of course, under the Articles of Confederation, uh sixty thousand person threshold, you could write a state constitution, come in as a state. So Virginia finally decided, okay, we'll give up our dreams of expanding westward beyond the Appalachians. And uh they allowed uh the, the Kentucky County of Virginia to become a separate state. And um it entered the Union as a slave state. And again, this is very important to keep, you know, southerners happy that there is this balance in the Senate. While the, while the North, they're definitely going to outnumber the uh South in the House of Representatives. The, the hope of southerners to keep their interests uh, you know, from being overrun was to have this balance of slave states and free states in the Senate. Uh, in the election of seventeen ninety-two, George Washington is still personally very popular. He had not yet made an official proclamation regarding the war in France yet. Uh, and so the Electoral College once again unanimously elects him as president. And under the original constitutional system, uh whoever gets second place becomes vice president. Now, as long as you don't have parties, this works great. You know, the person that, who is, you know, the most popular is going to get the first place and then the person who is the second, you know, uh, so you're getting two very qualified people. But later, when we have parties, if the person who gets first place is president and the person who gets second place is vice president, what ends up happening? If you have people from opposite parties, uh.
Contentions like all the time.
Argue over.
Yes, a very divided government. Um, and uh Zach, what were you gonna say?
It kind of got said for me. You're gonna have, you're gonna have two parties that completely and totally disagree with each other. So you're gonna have a president who wants one thing and a vice president who doesn't like that idea at all whatsoever.
Well, we're gonna see how this all plays out. Of course, what we're, what we're kind of foreshadowing here is that this is going to lead to a change in how this, how this uh operates. Uh, and you'll see as we get into future elections, you know, what, what the, what the change is in the Twelfth Amendment. But um uh, you know, the, the, the factions that were present within Washington's cabinet were really kind of growing in power, the, the, the followers of Hamilton versus the followers of Jeff- Jefferson. Um, and President Washington then, after being reelected, um uh makes the unpopular choice to stay neutral uh in this war where France is fighting all the rest of Europe and they look like, it kind of looks like a David and Goliath type of situation where, you know, you have this, this little democracy trying to fend off, you know, these, these great, you know, armies of the monarchies. And um uh, Washington basically um uh, you know, does the unpopular thing, but definitely uh the wise thing. And kind of the way that this is uh, that we reason this out and say, we really aren't breaking our alliance, we're not a country that breaks its word, is we say, look, our, our alliance was with the king of France and this new revolutionary government is not the government that we allied ourselves with. We allied ourselves with the royalty. Um, so um in spite of all of the public pressure against this, uh, the neutrality proclamation of seventeen ninety-three keeps us from getting involved in this foreign war, which very likely would have been a bad idea. Um, now, the Industrial Revolution is taking place in, in Britain. That's where it starts. And um Britain is, is uh able to produce cloth especially uh and other uh items much faster and much more efficiently through the use of this factory system where you had a gear that was being like, like our wheel that was turning gears and those gears were then turning um machines. and those gears were then turning, um, machines. So instead of making cloth with a hand loom, which was a much more labor intensive process, you had these power looms or the water frame, which was developed by an inventor named Richard Arkwright, um, in seventeen sixty-nine, which had become kind of, uh, the way to mass produce large amounts of cloth, uh, without, you know, having to have somebody weave it, uh, so to speak. So this was putting weavers out of business and, you know, the Luddites in, in Britain would rebel against that, but, uh, that's all AP Euro. But, um, i- if you worked in a factory and you knew how this system worked, you were, there was a law that Parliament had passed, uh, to keep you from leaving the country. And that was because they didn't want the secrets of the Industrial Revolution getting out of England. Well, at the time, there's no like, you know, uh, scanners scanning people's faces, uh, you know, or, or, you know, checking people's IDs and, and whatnot. Uh, so if you wanted to disguise yourself and get out of the country, it was definitely possible. So, um, Samuel Slater, who was a, uh, a man who was well versed in how these, the, the mechanics of these mills worked, was basically lured to the United States by a Quaker businessman named Moses Brown, who brought him over and had him set up the first factories in North America, uh, which again, were up in the north and were positioned near waterways. Uh, now later, James Watt would invent the steam engine, which would make it so you could just put it anywhere, uh, because you would use coal to, um, uh, fuel the steam engine and the steam engine would do the work. And so as the American, uh, version of the Industrial Revolution begins to kick off, we have a very important inventor that we need to discuss, um, named Eli Whitney. So Autumn, I believe this is your slide. If you would like to take the floor, I will let you do that.
Okay, so Eli Whitney is most well-known for his invention of the cotton gin and his idea of interchangeable parts, which he did not create, but he did make popular. So as far as his early life, he was born in seventeen sixty-five and he grew up in Westboro, Massachusetts. Um, as a child, he had multiple jobs. For example, at just age fourteen, he operated a nail manufacturing operation in his father's workshop. And after this, he also worked as a farm laborer and school teacher to raise money to eventually go to Yale. At Yale, he studied new ideas and technology in science and the applied arts. And after college, he was hired to be a tutor in South Carolina. But on the way to South Carolina, he met Catherine Green, who offered for him to rebought her plantation in Georgia, Mulberry Grove. So he took this offer and when he got there, he saw the need for faster cotton production. Um, the market for other crops like tobacco was declining and there just wasn't a, an efficient way to produce cotton. So with the help of Green and his partner Phineas Miller, they created the cotton gin, which they patented in seventeen ninety-four. And although they patented this in seventeen ninety-four, it didn't actually get approved and validated until much later. And they never got full compensation for the cotton gin, because they were always in label battles due to others recreating their own versions, um, just because of how simple the design was.
Okay, so, but can I stop you for a sec? Um, what was, what was the reason that the cotton industry was kind of flagging and, and, and actually, along with it, the profitability of the entire slave economy? Like, why was that just not feasible? Uh, what was the problem caused by the little seeds inside cotton bowls?
Um, they're just like, no matter how many people you had, there were just so many seeds and it took so much time to pick them all out and like separate the cotton from the seeds. That it just like, it was impossible to make it profitable.
Right, it was just not a profitable operation. And so, um, that basically is, is, was like slavery could have died out. Well, you know, just economically speaking, it wasn't profitable, you know, we could have, we could have avoided the entire civil war. And yet Eli Whitney comes along and invents something, which is a very simple machine. All it does is it puts a wire screen. You dump the cotton with the seeds in there and it just brushes the cotton through and all the seeds are left on the other side of the screen. Very, very simple, easy to copy, like you said. And, um, so that makes slavery profitable again. So it's kind of an unfortunate side effect of this invention. But go ahead, what else? Uh, tell us more about Whitney, cause he goes on to do other things.
Um, yes. So in seventeen ninety-seven, um, the government asked for forty thousand muskets from private contractors because national armories weren't making near enough. Um, this is to prepare for war with France, possible war. And then in nineteen, or seventeen ninety-eight, the government accepted Whitney's bid to make ten thousand rifles in two years, which he did not do. It actually took him ten years. And because it was taking him so long, in eighteen oh one, he was called to Washington to explain what he was doing with those government funds and what was going on. And he kind of put on this like famous display for this group there, where he had random buckets of parts that could make a rifle. And he took seemingly random parts and made multiple muskets out of it. Um, it was later proven to be a fake demonstration. He actually had the parts marked. But at the time, the group believed him and there are a lot of powerful people in that group like Jefferson. Um, so this earned him enough federal support and enough time to make fifteen thousand muskets in just four years. And all of this together made the idea of interchangeable parts very popular.
Alright, so basically because parts were custom made, you know, like when you needed a metal part, like a, a, like you had to have someone with like blacksmith type skills to literally hammer and kind of, um, form that part out of metal and, you know, so this, and so, like you couldn't take apart from one gun and put it on another gun because, you know, they were, they had to be pretty precise. Um, so this kind of creates this, this new idea of having interchangeable parts that can be, you know, replaced, et cetera, which would make, you know, these a much more attractive option as muskets. So yeah, excellent job. I think you've covered pretty much all the bases on Eli Whitney. And in the interest of time, we are gonna continue. Um, yes, Felicia.
Uh, didn't he also invent the milling machine?
Um, it is-
Basically, uh, use the rotary cutters to cut into different materials.
Alright, so milling machine, like are you talking about milling corn? Because milling, uh, kind of machines had been around for some time, like, you know, where you just had a big giant stone thing that would grind corn down into flour. Is, is that what you're talking about when you say milling machine?
I, I don't think so. I think it was used to like cut into harder materials.
Oh, like a mill? Okay, like you're, you're milling something. Um, Ethan, did you wanna comment on that? Cause I, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just gonna explain, maybe she meant like a milling machine like used to manufacture gun parts.
Right, very possible, yes, that he did. I, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if that's true or not, but, um, uh, that would, it would make sense if you were making interchangeable parts that you would have to have some sort of machine that could efficiently make the same part over and over again. So, um, yes, a, a machine that would mill those out, um, uh, would definitely be, uh, a very likely invention on his part as well. Um, Autumn, did you, did you come across that in your research at all?
Um, briefly, but I didn't go look into it.
Okay, so you did see a brief mention of it though?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so then Felicia, yes, you would be correct that there, that he did invent a milling machine as well. Alright, so that takes us to the cult of domesticity and this is Brayden. So Brayden, you're up.
Yeah, okay, so you have industrialization spreading like crazy fast. So, uh, especially in the north, or really only in the north, but, uh, so a lot of families adopted a new model of gender roles. Um, and this was especially prominent in Massachusetts and New York. Um, and basically rather than work alongside her husband on the family farm, uh, women would stay at home and take care of the children and all that, while the men went and worked in factories. And, uh, so it's, it's basically a, a philosophy where there were like separate spheres that regulated gender roles.
Okay, very, yeah, go ahead.
So, and, oh, actually, a lot of people saw this as a really good thing, uh, for women at the time because it was like their entire role was to, uh, educate children. Like they, they both privately, like in their own homes and, and in schools and stuff. They, like, the only people that were really educating kids anymore were women. And so they, it basically, a lot of people saw this as they had complete control over the future, cause they were, you know, e- educating all, all the people that would, would be in charge one day.
Right, unless you, unless you had the, the money to afford like a tutor, cause a lot of the, the tutors, you know, were male. Um, you know, and you had little schoolmasters here and there that were male, but for, by, by and large, women were taking over the teaching profession, especially kind of in the homeschool role. Um, so, um, you're saying women kind of got a better status because they didn't have to work anymore. They know, they could relax, they could take care of household chores and they could, um, just, you know, focus on rearing the children. But at the same time, they didn't have to worry about, um, you know, uh, doing all of the chores that they had to do on the family farm. How is this ending, how does this end up being a bad thing though? Like, how does this end up hurting women eventually, as it really takes hold in the north especially, as more and more people become urban dwellers who, who, who go and work in factories?
It, it kind of turned into a whole stigma where like, oh, women can't work like real jobs and blah, blah, blah. And it, it, it raises a lot of problems, especially that we're facing like in, in modern times where, you know, there, people don't really, or, or people used to not really think that women could work like quote-unquote, real jobs and-
Okay, alright, you're, you're definitely on the right track. Nick, did you wanna, um, say something real quick?
Um, yes, I was gonna ask how that, that term like cult of domesticity, um, became a thing because it sounds a lot more sinister than it actually is.
Well, it's a, um, it's a way of looking at things, I guess you could say, a cult. So cult in the not-so-sinister sense of the nineteen sixties, you know, um, Jamestown slash, um, I'm sorry, um, not Jamestown, uh, the guy who went to Guyana and everybody drank the Kool-Aid and died, um, Jonestown guy or the, you know, Charles Manson cult, you know, we, we have this negative pursuit, perception of cults. This is more like, you know, like a cult following kind of thing, like everybody kind of jumps on board and, and they, 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 they like something, you know, this is something where people were kind of eagerly kind of joining in and, and supporting this. But it does have negative effects like Br- uh, like Brayden was saying. So Lauren, what were you gonna say?
Um, I was gonna ask the same thing, kind of like, was it a cult in like the religious sense? Or a cult just like based on like what they personally thought?
Just kind of a popular movement more. So yes, that is a bit misleading because we have this extra connotation added to the word cult from the nineteen sixties, you know, onward. Olivia, what were you gonna say?
Um, I think I'm just a little confused because I know, um, Brayden said that women turned into teachers for their children. And I thought they already were, cause I remember us talking about how they were teachers to their children a few slides previous. So I'm just a little confused, like, did they get more roles or what?
They had less on their plate. Uh, so when they were farmwives, they had to teach the children, but they also had to do all of those farm chores that, you know, were pretty evenly split between the man and the woman because there was so much to do on a farm. Now, they don't have to do those. So it's like, hey, you don't have to work anymore. Um, you can just stay home and, and raise the kids. But that does damage their ability to make the decisions because they're no longer bringing in the income like they used to. So i- i- it looks attractive at first because it's less on your plate. You can, the, the husband will, will buy you dresses and nice things so you can look good. You don't have to worry about, you know, spending your time doing all of these chores. But at the same time, you no longer have as much of a say because the man is bringing in all the money. Uh, Kenzie, what were you gonna say?
Oh, I was just gonna add on to the whole using the word cult thing. It isn't like in a religious sense. It's like, oh, you have a big cult following. It's like a whole popularity. That's what I was gonna-
Okay, so just kind of a little popularity contest type deal, yeah. Um, so, yeah. And, and, uh, Brayden, so I think you, you already said this, but this is very important to underline. So women are going to become, in the north, as this spreads, um, and as more and more people go to the cities to work in factories, uh, women are going to become more and more relegated to the domestic sphere, so to speak. And, um, this cult of domesticity is, is going to deprive them of the ability to really participate as much, uh, in, in, in how things are run. And it's gonna lead to kind of this male-dominated society, um, that, uh, it will be, it will be very hard to break the spell of this because, you know, a little girl might say to her parents, well, daddy, I wanna go and, and do, you know, work in the factory. And they'd say, no, 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 girls don't do that. Girls stay home with, with the kids. Your, your job is to find a man and get married and, and raise the children. Um, and, you know, so this really kind of quashes the, the ambitions of girls. Um, but if you're told that by the people that you love and respect and look up to, you're gonna just accept it. And because girls didn't have to go out and do things, there are certain, like, in the, in the work world, there are certain big parts of education that they just simply didn't need. Like, they might need a knowledge of history and a knowledge of basic reading and writing, but they might not need a knowledge of math and science. And so, um, the later men would be like, well, you just don't understand, you know, or you're too, you're too emotional, you don't get it. But really, it wasn't the fact that they didn't understand, it was the fact that they had never gotten the education that would have given them the power to understand because, you know, they're like, well, girls don't need this, so we're not going to teach them this. Um, so, yes, Lauren.
Oh, I was gonna ask a question and I just changed my mind about asking it.
Okay, alright. So, um, that is the cult of domesticity, which is going to get more and more of a grip as we shift more and more over to an industrial economy, especially in the north. So you're gonna see this become more and more, uh, powerful as time goes by. And women are gonna be deprived of their rights. Uh, Brayden, did you have anything else that you'd like to add before we move on?
Uh, yeah, I have a quote from a female advocate for this system. Uh, her name is Catherine Beecher.
Yes, Catherine Beecher, sister to the famous Harriet Beecher Stowe. Uh, and this will be like, this will be later on in the late eighteen, or the mid to late eighteen hundreds, but go ahead.
Uh, she said, "In manners pertaining to the education of their children and the selection of and support of a clergyman and all benevolent enterprises and in all questions relating to morals or manners, they," meaning women, "have a superior influence." So it basically just reinforces that idea of, oh, they, they have all the say in what the kids think, basically.
Right, and women would judge each other. Like, she actually wrote this book, Catherine Beecher, on, um, like, like how a lady's home should be structured. Uh, and like, so, like, there were certain expectations of your housekeeping abilities that, that, you know, and women would judge each other based on how well the home was kept. And of course, then they would, they would show off what men had bought them. But kind of not realizing that they were prisoners in a system where men had all the control and men were the ones who bought them things and they couldn't just, you know, get the economic independence to go and buy them themselves. And so, um, this, this is gonna like get more and more influential as time goes by. Um, that takes us to the state of Tennessee. And actually, I saw Jared just joined us. So, uh, Jared, this is your slide. And, um, in the other class, Brody, this is your slide. So is Brody, oh, Brody's not on this call. So, uh, Jared, uh, go ahead and, uh, tell us about the founding of the state that we currently live in.
Okay, so originally, the state was not called Tennessee. It was just a volunteer state. Because when they founded Tennessee, it was just made pretty much to protect, uh, North Carolina against the Native American attacks. So like, it was created by the government, not by actually the people. So everyone who went over there to live was pretty much just volun- they just volunteered to go over there.
It was, it was a county, right? It was kind of like, uh, like in Kentucky. Um, was Kentucky started out as a county of Virginia? So this is a county of North Carolina that is, you know, aw- across the Appalachians. Because North Carolina intends to spread westward, you know, uh, that was the original intention of North Carolina. But things change, uh, so tell us what happens as things begin to change.
Uh, well, they started to, they tried to really settle it and they, they knew, they originally named it the State of Franklin, which failed.
Another, another one of those little independent republics that kind of developed, uh, and since it was way out there on the frontier, a lot of people just left it alone. Uh, but, go ahead.
And originally, once they actually started to pretty much found it, it ended up being a hundred and twelve miles long. And originally, once they actually started to pretty much found it, it ended up being a hundred and twelve miles long and uh four hundred and thirty-two miles wide, including the, uh, as we know today, the Great Smoky Mountains.
Yes, so that was kind of the original little um eight counties of uh Franklin, uh, which you see a picture of right here. And then um, but how does this, how do things change? What does North Carolina do in seventeen eighty-eight, which which changes things?
I don't have that.
Alright, so in seventeen eighty-eight, uh, um, North Carolina actually like reasserts its control over the area. Uh, kind of ending the Franklin, the Republic of Franklin. Uh, so they had kind of done their own thing for a while. North Carolina had ignored them, but then at this point, um, they they kind of reassert their authority. Uh, but uh, the population in the area um reaches the sixty-third thousand person threshold by seventeen ninety-five. And North Carolina, like Virginia, gives up its its dream of expanding straight westward and allows its western counties to kind of form their own state. So in seventeen ninety-six, Tennessee enters the Union as the sixteenth state and as a slave state. Uh, did you have anything else that you'd like to add, Jared, beyond that?
Uh, not really, no sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and nice job. So that takes us to Jay's Treaty. What now, Zach?
Uh, other Zach has his hand raised.
Yeah, Zach, go ahead.
Was the was the original border, like, was the border originally the Mississippi River like it is now? Like in that kind of Ohio territory, or did they kind of just have a blob out there that they said is Tennessee?
When when you, when you apply for statehood with your state constitution, one of the things that is in the actual state constitution are the borders. So like, those are like surveyed lines that are like in the state constitution. So there's like no ambiguity. Like, when you, when you apply to become a state, that's part of what's in the state constitution are where are the state borders, you know, according to uh your lines of latitude and longitude. So yes, uh, it does spread straight across all the way over to the Mississippi River, kind of giving, you know, and you notice how it follows like that um, that line from like with the northern border of of North Carolina and then kind of the southern border of North Carolina. So it just kind of s- extends straight westward. So really, we were the westward arm of North Carolina until they decided not to pursue um, you know, going from, you know, coast to coast, so to speak. Uh, Lauren, go ahead.
Um, I was just wondering who decides, like, where the lines go. Like, I understand, like, natural um landmarks and all that are deciphered. Not deciphered, but I just said it. I was just wondering if it was up to somebody or I just remember when uh the colonies were under British rule, that the king, I felt like, got to decide. I can't really remember, but.
Yeah, no, you're, that's an excellent question, actually. And really, the answer is that um, the uh the state, when it applies for statehood, um, has to say, these are the borders that we want as a state. And then Congress is the one that approves that. So Congress actually passes resolutions to allow states to come into the Union like they pass laws. And so it can, it it can get voted down. And then there have been incidents where states have gotten into little wars with each other over border regions. Uh, like I believe Ohio and Michigan uh get in into a war over what is known as the Toledo Strip. And so the Congress has to step in and like be the neutral arbiter. And so um, when we get to Michigan, you're gonna see this, but that's how Michigan gets the Upper Peninsula. They they say, look, if you're willing to give up the Toledo Strip, we'll give you uh the Upper Peninsula. Um, so so Congress really is the answer to your question. They're the one that decide. Yeah, Ethan, go ahead.
What I was just saying is like, I think it's how, in the case of Tennessee, I think they just kept it so like you can't go past the Lab Two lines of North Carolina.
Yeah, it's, it was the original kind of dream of North Carolina to to extend westward forever that.
As you can see on like western maps, it's usually the most defined and weird borders on the coastlines while when you start to go into like Great Plains and other states, you can see it starts to get, you know, more boring, more straight lines because, you know, no natural features to define those.
Right, it's much easier to kind of, when you're applying for statehood, to to just use those those latitude, longitude lines. Uh, unless there's a a river there. Yeah, and um, you know, it it just, yeah, so um and and the northern border had already been set because Kentucky had already entered the Union. So there was no disputing that, like, that was already a set border. Uh, so really, it was just the southern and western borders that had to be defined. Um, so that's the state of Tennessee. And remember, we didn't own any of the land past the Mississippi River. So like the Mississippi is as far west as we could go at the time. Alright, so that takes us to Jay's Treaty. Now, this is where Washington really starts to lose his unpo- his his popularity. Washington um decided during this this kind of war of the First Coalition where that was being fought over in Europe to actually seek out good relations with the big powers of Europe. And uh, uh, especially those that had colonies uh close to the United States. So um, uh, Britain was our neighbor. We had to make a treaty with Britain to kind of, you know, smooth things over and and settle all borders, border disputes with Canada. So um, Washington sent uh the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, John Jay, to Britain to negotiate a peaceful, a peaceful treaty between the two uh powers, between us and them, that would settle border issues. So um, any border problems would be settled by a a joint commission. British troops would be withdrawn from their posts in the American West, which they had kind of occupied ever since the kind of the days of the Articles of Confederation. And there would also be a commission that would set, that would be set up to settle the the remaining loyalist claims on property and and compensation for damages that were still outstanding. So um, when this treaty is made, the American public is very anti-British and very pro-French. So this is like, people were like boo, boo, and um uh, Washington was actually um like burned in effigy. Does anybody know what that means, being burned in effigy?
They make a little mock of you and then burn it.
Right, yeah, it's like a little straw, like uh, like a little scarecrow version of you or something, you know, and then they just like light it on fire. And this really hurt Washington's feelings. Like, i- he had enjoyed the love and respect of his countrymen, but the the very, very anti-anti-British mood of the country um, caused this very negative reaction against him. But was it something that was necessary? Did we, did we want to kind of establish a peaceful, you know, relationship with our northern neighbor? I mean, anyone, was that a necessary thing?
Yes, it was a very necessary thing because if we didn't establish a somewhat peaceful type thing with our neighbors to the north, then it wouldn't be unjustifiable for them to come and try and reclaim uh the colonies for Britain.
Yeah, a- and and just also, you know, we we, it was just, you know, we wouldn't have to fight with them, et cetera. Yeah, i- i- it it definitely made for kind of that stability that that Washington was looking for. Now, our other neighbor is Spain. Spain has control of the Louisiana Territory to the west of the Mississippi River. And so um, we sent um Thomas Pinkney, uh, the ambassador to Britain, over to Spain to negotiate a treaty with Spain. Which was known as the Treaty of San Lorenzo, but also known as Pinkney's Treaty uh in our country. And uh, the following terms were basically agreed to. The port of New Orleans, which was Spanish, was, the the Spanish would allow our farmers to send their crops to market via the port of New Orleans. So the, so we were allowed to use the port um to ship our goods to European markets. Uh, the border of no- their North American Territory, uh, which had originally kind of been up in the middle of what is now um, uh, Alabama and Mississippi, was revised southward to the thirty-first parallel. Uh, so that kind of seeded this large swath of territory to us, which we also claimed, but now there was no other claimant to it. Um, uh, it was kind of known as the Yazoo Territory. It was like west of Georgia. And then um uh, and uh, they basically, um, you know, we added it to this this territory. Uh, yeah, that was also already known as the Mississippi Territory. So uh, Pinkney's Treaty was ratified by the Senate, signed into law by President Washington. And that takes us to the eleventh amendment. So during this time, there was a court case uh, where Alexander Chisholm, who was the executor uh of the state of the late Robert Farquhar. So essentially, this guy is is executing the estate of of a of a deceased person. Robert Farquhar of South Carolina filed suit against the state of Georgia for some war debts that Georgia had owed to Mr. Farquhar that had never been paid. And so Georgia uh just was like, we have sovereign immunity. We refuse to appear in court against an individual. You can't sue us, so to speak. And so um, uh, the this case goes all the way to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court in a four-one decision because by this time, the for- the court now has five members. Um, they uh basically decide in Mr. Uh, Chisholm's favor in Chisholm v. Georgia. So the state of Georgia was forced to pay these debts by the Supreme Court. And states began to realize, oh, my gosh, all of these people are gonna start suing us for war debts and other debts and and um, it it really alarmed the states. So the state legislatures um decided to use their their considerable power to uh pass or to propose a an amendment to the Constitution that would give them sovereign immunity against lawsuits. Uh, and so the eleventh amendment was um basically uh passed through Congress because, of course, uh, state legislatures were very influential over the various, you know, representatives in Congress. And then it went out to the states and it was ratified. Um, and that kind of overturns this Supreme Court decision in Chisholm v. Georgia. So um, uh, that is the eleventh amendment. That take this, yes.
This is mine.
And, okay, and did someone have a question?
I did have a question, sorry. I couldn't raise my hand in time and I didn't want you to move on too quick. So the eleventh amendment, what is it like, like exactly what is the?
So the short version, short version is you can't sue a state. Okay, that's that's the short version of the.
That's exactly what I wanted, thank you.
Yeah, you cannot sue a state in court because they're immune. They have what's called sovereign immunity. Uh, so, yeah, yeah, that that that's essentially in a nutshell, that's what it is.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, alright, so um, this is Kenzie. So Kenzie.
So here's how I have this structured. I have like the events before and leading up to it. I have the address and all that, and then afterwards.
Alright, and um, yeah, the address, I actually have a uh YouTube video of the address. Um, but if you have kind of your own version of that, that's fine too. This is, but some of the stuff he says in the address is really important. So um, I'll just let you, just remember, we're kind of being, trying to be time conscious because we want everything before the end. So go ahead.
I'll try to summarize. Okay, so the events before, during Washington's second term, the newly formed USA had arrived at the French Revolution. French revolutionaries executed Louis XVI and Marie Antoinette, which started a bloodbath, which continued to be a chaotic mess. Since Washington didn't want to get in another fight with Great Britain, he, of course, drafted a statement of neutrality. The proclamation ignited a storm of controversy and criticism. In addition, Washington wanted to smooth things over with Great Britain due to border disputes. So the Jay's Treaty occurred to settle the disputes. With all of the chaos, it was enough for Washington to withdraw from the possibility of a third term. Before Washington's second term, he needed convincing to go into this term, which ultimately he did. So this was ultimately most likely to occur after his second term. After Washington refused a third term nomination, he drafted his immensely important farewell address. In this address, he advised American citizens to view themselves as a cohesive unit and avoid political parties and issued a warning to be wary of attachments and entanglements with other nations. Of course, Jefferson and Hamilton's disagreements would spark different political parties, those being the Federalists led by Hamilton and the Anti-Federalists led by Jefferson. But future presidents took Washington's advice. Um, aftermath, Washington retired back to the plantation in Mount Vernon in nineteen seventy-nine. Until his last days, he was focused on maintaining productiveness on the plantation and getting his affairs in order. Eventually, two years later, on December fourteenth seventeen ninety-nine, Washington passed away after contracting pneumonia. Sorry, excuse me. On December, okay, can you continue? Okay, on December twelfth, Washington was out horseback riding, supervising farm activities, and it began to snow. Without changing his wet clothes, he went straight to dinner. The next morning, Washington had a sore throat. And of course, the condition worsened the next two days until his death. His last words were, tis well.
So, yes, so that is the passing of of, you know, uh, the great kind of, you know, father figure of of the American, uh, you know, uh, nation. And of course, we'll get to how how that affects politics because the, his death and the funeral are actually going to kind of avert the attention of the nation away from a crisis it was experiencing. So we'll we'll get to that in a little bit, but um uh, this is super important, okay? Washington foresees two threats uh to our countries. Uh, like, his his big thing was all stability, stability, stability. And he foresees these two big threats um to our country's uh uh stability. Uh, and so let me just, this is a kind of a reenactment here, but the the words are 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 still timely, even today. Um, you know, when it comes to kind of party strife and um and, you know, the possibility of getting dragged into a foreign war. Oh, boy, that's really. Alright, I think this is still very timely today. Go ahead, Faith, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna ask, didn't um Alexander Hamilton help Washington write his farewell address?
That's, if if you've seen the play Hamilton, then there's like a song about that, yeah.
Yeah, that's actually the video I was gonna show.
Oh, okay, the 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 Hamilton thing. Is it, is it just like a video of the song?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let me, let me, did you send it to me?
Yes, I did. Um, I don't know if the link's gonna work because I like exactly copied it and then sent it to you, but I think it should.
Okay, let me search your name real fast here.
And there is one part we can skip to, but uh, the whole thing is about five to six minutes.
Yeah, let's let's, let's do that. Let's skip because I wanna get through everything before the end here. Um, so Kenzie. This is presentation for his.
Yeah, I don't know the exact like time point, but I know it gets into um Hamilton like saying the address with Washington. I don't know what time point that's at, but.
Okay, do you have kind of a general sense? Is it like in the middle towards the?
Yeah, it's about, it's about in the middle and toward, yeah, it's about like three fourths of the way through. And it's at the White House when they're doing it, so that's pretty cool.
Alright, cool. See if this works.
Uh, you can just search up um one last time at the White House and it should pop up. Uh, the first one. Yeah, about right there.
Okay, so like right about here?
Yes, and it should get to it.
Okay, and um of course, this is during what uh ceremony right here? We see uh the guy who is currently running for president right here. And his uh uh the guy who he was his um uh president while he was vice president. What event is this right here from?
I know it was at the time of him leaving the White House.
Right, so Obama does a farewell address, and in many ways, there are parallels drawn between his farewell address. And Washington's farewell address. But Washington really does warn us against this 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 rank partisanship. Is that a problem nowadays? When we're looking at politics?
Yeah.
Could it could it divide our country and and eventually possibly even destroy it?
Very well could this year.
Yeah, so um his his warning is 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 um is is still relevant even today. Uh and um, you know, he he also hit on one other very, very important uh warning, which is. Entangling alliances because, you know, some alliance that we're in, whether it be NATO. Or an alliance from the Cold War with Taiwan or, you know, or or something could draw us into a war. Which would eventually um, you know, destroy us as well, so um.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the passing of Washington, kind of the center that falls out of American politics. Like, he was the one guy that everybody trusted. Uh so, once he's gone, uh you're going to see the factions emerge. You know, the the Jefferson faction versus the Hamilton faction, which will be the basis for the two political parties. Uh so that is is Washington's.
By the way, I do have a quote from the beginning of the dress, but if we need to move on, that's okay.
Oh, as long as it's not like super long.
Yeah, it's not super long.
Go ahead.
This is from the beginning of his address. Friends and fellow citizens, the period for a new election of a citizen to administer the executive government of the United States being not far distant. And the time actually arrives when your thoughts must be employed in designating the person who is to be close with that important trust. It appears to me proper, dot, 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 that I should now apprise you of the resolution I have formed. To decline being considered among the number of those out of whom a choice is to be made.
Okay, and actually, there is where he says, I'm not gonna run for a third term. He easily could have run for a third term, e- even though his popularity was damaged by Jay's treaty. Still, the esteem he was held in, you know, would have guaranteed, maybe it wouldn't have been unanimous, but. He could have run for a third term, but he decides to end it too. That does set another precedent as well. Of presidents serving two terms, which some people followed willingly and others, you know, just by the end of their second term. They were so unpopular that they they didn't have the political wherewithal to continue. Uh but um, yeah, that definitely very, very important kind of parting words from the. The quote, father of the nation. Uh and that takes us to the campaign of seventeen ninety six. So um, this is where you start to see uh the 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 bitter. Depths to which partisanship will take people. Uh but now, a- again, it's it's like we're still all, you know, uh fellow Americans, so to speak. But we we start to see how politics can get ugly and personal, et cetera. Um the guy who kind of takes up the the torch of the 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 Hamilton. Uh version of uh the party is uh John Adams, uh the vice president for um. Washington and this party that is kind of like for a strong federal government becomes known as the Federalist Party. Um and um. Uh Adams really campaigned among the people uh in the accused Jefferson of being. A demagogue, uh which is like a rabble rouser, someone who tries to rouse like unin- like uninformed people. An atheist, okay, again, referring to Jefferson's deism. An anarchist, okay, uh basically referring to the fact that Jefferson is like, uh you know, very, very states' rights. And kind of, you know, um uh doesn't want a strong central authority and a Franco maniac, okay? Uh the Democratic Republicans accused Adams. Uh uh and by the way, the Democratic Republican Party is the party that kind of centers around Jefferson. Uh of planning to turn America into a monarchy where Adams, because Adams had like wanted to bestow titles of nobility. Upon um, you know, certain people within the the republic and that had been roundly rejected. And then put into the constitution that that wouldn't be the case. So that opened him up to, you know, charges of wanting to be a monarch. Uh yes, Faith.
Um I was curious, was the law that you had to be born in this country made at this time? Or was Hamilton's popularity super, super bad because uh had he cheated on his wife at this time and made it public through the Reynolds pamphlet? Or did John Adams just?
It's actually in the constitution. It's 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 in the constitution that uh you had to be, you had to be born here, yeah. Yeah, and so um. It it, yeah, right, it's it's in the actual, it's actually in article two of the constitution. So uh basically, uh there was uh, you know, they 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 focused on the popular anger against Jay's treaty. Which they called a sellout uh to the British. Uh but there was an embarrassing moment uh in the campaign when uh the French ambassador Pierre Adet. Publicly endorsed Jefferson, making it look like France was trying to get, well, trying to basically put Jefferson in the White House. And uh that made him look like he was gonna be a tool of the French. And so the Democratic Republicans had to disavow the support of the French ambassador. John Adams's running mate was Thomas Pinkney of Pinkney's Treaty. And Thomas Jefferson's uh running mate was a lawyer by the name of Aaron Burr. Who was kind of the arch rival of um of Hamilton in New York. Uh New York being a very important northern state and um, you know, those. Those delegates to the um Constitutional Convention would be very important. So Burr was uh, you know, kind of the the northern balance to um Jefferson. You know, who was from Virginia. And so in the election of seventeen ninety six. Uh we see the problems that develop in the original electoral system. Uh it, the person who gets the highest number of electoral votes. Uh and notice how uh New York ends up all voting uh in favor of Adams. Uh ends up getting the uh, you know, the victory. And and notice how this is a very southern versus northern kind of election in a lot of ways. Uh even though Pennsylvania is a little split there. Basically, that means that by just like the the tiniest fraction. I I think it's just by one electoral vote, uh Adams is able to squeak out a victory. Just because of the larger population of these states up here and some states, you know, like where the the electoral votes were split. That basically puts him in as president, but who will become vice president since he will get the second highest number?
Jefferson.
Yeah, so two people who are diametrically opposed are now president and vice president. And you're going to see the problems that this is going to create during the Adams administration. So John Adams comes into office. Um he is. One of the great kind of founding leaders of the country in many ways. Uh he was, you know, they called him the Colossus of Independence during the uh consti- like the the First Continental Congress. When they were trying to decide whether or not to put out the Declaration of Independence and actually rebel. He was one of the the guys who made powerful speeches in favor of, you know, this this, what what seemed like. An incredibly risky move uh to revolt against the British Empire. And they called him the Colossus of Independence as a result. So a lot of his popularity uh stemmed from those days. People remembered those days when he was the one man who stood up and and kind of uh made everybody. You know, want to be a patriot. And um. Uh he he he'd also been a prominent member of the Sons of Liberty. Uh obviously, as a lawyer, we already saw him defend the soldiers in the Boston Massacre. And um i- he has a tendency to be very stubborn. So when it was like, you know, the whole world's against you, you know, you shouldn't declare independence, that actually turned out to be a really good quality. But later, as president, it led him to be very inflexible. Um and so that turned out to be a a not so good quality. Now, um his wife, Abigail, was in in every way his intellectual equal, if not his intellectual superior. Very smart woman, um and she and he kept up this um this this voluminous correspondence. Uh that really showed the depth of their affection for each other, but also that her his respect for her. And oftentimes, when he would make arguments uh in a court case or even make decisions as president. It was heavily influenced by Abigail Adams. He's a also a very, very Christian um president, uh very, very kind of uh strong in his faith. And uh we'll we'll kind of see how things turn out now. Tensions between the French government and the United States um uh continue to worsen. In spite of our efforts to um to smooth them over. So John Adams realizing that uh, you know, Washington's neutrality proclamation had uh created some problems for us. Tried to smooth things over with the the ally we had jilted, which was um the uh. The French, and this, by the way, uh you know, is still in the midst of all this kind of chaos of of the French Revolution. Uh the guy who was like a political cat of nine lives and managed to survive through successive changes in the French. Government as their foreign minister, um uh Charles Maurice de Talleyrand. Was was very cool and cold towards our ambassadors. Our ambassadors, by the way, were were Charles Coatsworth Pinkney. John Marshall, who later would become chief justice of the Supreme Court. And Elbridge Gerry, who would later become well-known for the practice of gerrymandering. And um uh they uh basically were just kept waiting. Like they're like, we would like to see uh, you know, Foreign Minister Talleyrand, and he just wouldn't meet with them. And they were approached by agents. Uh these se- these agents known as X, Y, and Z were basically all asking the same thing. If the United States wanted to normalize relations with France and and kind of make up for for breaking the treaty. That we had uh made with them earlier, we would basically have to uh bribe them. We would have to give France twelve million dollars and give um Talleyrand a personal bribe of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um this incensed our our um uh uh our three ambassadors. And Pinkney famously replied, no, no, not a penny, not a sixpence. Millions for defense, but not one cent for tribute. And um this led to increasing tension between the French government and the United States. So our former ally was now kind of becoming our enemy. And that leads to the quasi-war, which is somebody's slide.
That's my slide.
Alright, Cody, alright, so you are up. I will give you the floor. Go ahead.
Alright, so the quasi-war was an undeclared naval uh naval war between the United States and France. The war was fought from seven uh seventeen ninety eight to the um eighteen hundred. The Americans lost over eighty-two soldiers and more than eighty-four were wounded. An exact amount is unknown, and twenty-two privateers on the American side were killed. And around tw- two thousand merchant ships were captured, but I don't know how much I I believe in that. I'm I'm not exactly sure.
So before we get too far into the details, let's just talk about what is this? Like, are we actually fighting a war or not? Like, wh- what what is going on here? Like, are are there armies marching in the field? Wh- what has war been declared by Congress? Wh- what's going on?
Uh war was not declared, but it happened cuz France was seizing uh American ships, so we retaliated.
Okay, so yeah, so the 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 kind of sour relationship that had developed out of the X, Y, Z affair had led to. French ships attacking our ships, our merchant ships and just seizing them. So we began retaliating by attacking their ships. And so it's kind of, you know, the whole privateer thing, you know, they commissioned people to go and commit acts of piracy uh in in. Like uh in the employ of a nation. And so um, we haven't actually like declared war and we're not like fully at war. But we're sinking each other's ships and killing each other's sailors. So we're kind of as close to war as you can get without actually being at war. And, you know, this really kind of um, you know, causes all this consternation back at our, you know, back. At home because, you know, this is a big European power and now suddenly we're like right on the edge of war. Like, any one of these acts could be uh considered, you know, the beginning of a of a an actual full-blown war. So um tell us how kind of how this goes. Like, what what ends up happening? How is it eventually resolved, et cetera?
Alright, so most of the fighting um during the undeclared war was taking place in the Caribbean and Atlantic coast. And how it ended was um. After Napoleon overthrew the French government on September thirtieth, the Treaty of Mortiffontaine. I think that's how you say it.
Right, which we all, we we call it the Convention of eighteen hundred. They call it the Treaty of Mortifontaine. Uh but um we call the um the the Convention of eighteen hundred, but go ahead. I believe we have a slide on that. Actually, I think there is a slide on that coming up, but um you can just mention that, like, that is kind of the end. Where we negotiate like this peace, right?
Yeah, and so the quasi-war did le- uh leave a bad viewpoint in America and causing people to question. The nature and extent of neutrality. It also uh the limits of presidential power and the role of military in America.
Right, because Adams himself cannot declare war on 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 France. It has to be Congress. There are a lot of people in Congress who still are are taking Washington's advice of, you know, avoiding foreign entanglements. But what do we do in response to this? Because it it becomes obvious that in order to stand up to France on the high seas, we're gonna need this. What does what does Congress uh commission the building of?
The Navy?
Yeah, so really, this is where the American Navy is really born, uh is is here in the the midst of the quasi-war. So um twelve new warships are are uh approved by Congress to be built and outfitted. And again, back at this time, if you wanted to project your power beyond your borders, uh really, you had to have a navy. So to be considered a power at all in the world, um and to protect your your merchant ships and your commerce out there, the you you had to have a navy. So uh at least we were able to um uh to to get a navy out of this. How do, what does this do to Adams's popularity as president?
Um, I didn't write anything about that, but if I had a guess, it probably damaged it.
Yeah, it it does, because there still is this kind of little like strong pro-French feeling. Uh anti-British feeling, cuz it's it's not that long after the revolution uh in the American public. But, you know, so being the enemy of France, kind of kind of continuing this this streak, this unpopular streak that had been started by Washington. Definitely doesn't help him in terms of his popularity with uh the public. Um and and really, it stresses wa- Adams out. Like Adams has the hardest time dealing with this just because he, you know, he's, he wants things to just work. Like the way he wants them to. He's very stubborn, and when they, when people don't do what he wants, he gets kind of, uh he reacts poorly. Uh to that, so do you have anything else, Cody?
I did have that Benjamin Stoddart um became the second. Um, I did have that Benjamin Stoddart um became the Secretary of the Navy at the time.
Okay. All right. That, yes, that is a a good additional point. So that takes us to um a another little tax war that is born out of this new expenditure that the government has. So because we uh we had to fund the building of this navy uh to fight the quasi-war, Congress passed this two-million-dollar appropriation bill. And um each state had to contribute a certain amount. So you had tax assessors who were basically walking around and looking at houses. And the way they val- they they um they they estimated the value of a house was how many windows it had. Um, uh, because the more windows you have, the the nicer your houses apparently. Uh and um Pennsylvania in particular had to contribute two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to uh the uh the 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 building of the of the navy. And um John Fries was an auctioneer and farmer in Western Pennsylvania who took some tax collectors prisoner. Uh, and they they had hot water thrown on them. So this is a step down from the Whiskey Rebellion. At least they're not giving people like third-degree burns uh and and the kind of the horrible, you know, injuries that you would get when you were tarred and feathered. Uh, at least we're a little more civil now. Um, but uh uh he he took these guys prisoner outside Enoch Roberts Tavern. And then uh got into a confrontation with the local Pennsylvania militia leader. And as his news of his rebellion spread, uh John Fries and sixty men uh basically grew to a force of s- four hundred men. President Adams sent out an armed force and Fries and forty others were arrested and then tried on charges of treason. And then once again, Adams pardons uh the offenders. But uh it's it's always Western Pennsylvania. Like, does anybody remember when we talked about like who settled that area? Why it's always Western Pennsylvania? What what eh what ethnicity is is settled?
Scotch-Irish.
Yes, the Scotch-Irish. They're they're legendary tempers. So, and you know, they they did not like those taxes. All right. So um President Adams began to get concerned that there were French nationals in our country who were kind of doing what Citizen Janet had done earlier. Um, and were trying to foment uh kind of sedition within our country uh against our official policy, which was to be sort of against France uh in the quasi-war. And so um he passed, he he basically had enough influence among Federalists in Congress that he was able to get the Alien and Sedition Acts passed. Um, uh, and uh look at what ha- like what these three laws say. First of all, the Alien Act says that uh any foreign national who was dangerous to the interests of the United States could be immediately deported. Um, the Sedition Act said that you could be fined and imprisoned um if you criticized the federal government or the president in print or in a speech. Uh, and this was like aimed at silencing anti-war rhetoric. And the Naturalization Act lengthened the period of time that a foreign national had to live in our country before they could be considered a naturalized citizen. So what First Amendment right is being violated here?
Freedom of the press.
And eh yeah, in in freedom of the press. Zach, you had your hand up. Is that your, all you wanted to say?
Yeah, that that was exactly what I was gonna say.
Oh, okay. All right. So um this is where Adams, like, you know, inflexibility and his like, you know, his unwillingness to put up with uh people who disagreed with him really comes to the fore. And um uh obviously, there is an a a constitutionality problem here. So Olivia, what were you gonna say?
So what if, what have that been considered unconstitutional if it?
Right.
Um, violated? Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, eh eh that's an excellent question. That's exactly what I was going to go to. And like, there is no authority set up by the by the United States Constitution as to what, who who gets to decide whether um, you know, like something is constitutional or not. That would actually be assumed later by the Supreme Court. But at this time, any power not given to the federal government is reserved to the states. And so the states have the power to quote nullify federal law, meaning declare it unconstitutional. And so Adams' own vice president, Thomas Jefferson, uh returns to Virginia. And um, or I'm sorry, he goes to Kentucky and James Madison also introduces uh similar resolutions in Virginia. And these become known as the the Virginia and Kentucky Resolutions, which basically said that this federal, these federal laws were null and void within the borders of the state of Virginia and the state of Kentucky. So this was setting up a constitutional crisis. Um, you know, the federal government was like facing off against state governments. And um it didn't look good. There was a showdown. But right at this time, this is when Washington dies in seventeen ninety-nine. And so the whole country's attention is turned towards President Washington's death. And that is when that gives Adams the political cover to kind of quietly withdraw um uh the 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 Alien and Sedition Acts by basically not, by allowing them to expire and not a lot, not renewing them um uh eh eh as a way of kind of like saving face and and getting out of this this confrontation. But of course, this is foreshadowing the great confrontations to come between the states and the federal government. And that takes us to the story of Napoleon taking over France. So Faith.
That's my slide.
And I don't, Dylan's not on here, so uh Faith, go ahead and um try to remember, we're just trying to keep it short. But um we are just gonna finish out the slides. Like, if we have to stay a little extra to do it, we'll do it. But go ahead.
Okay. I'll try to be fast, but I have a lot. Okay. So Napoleon was a really influential French general and he came from E- back from Egypt in seventeen ninety-nine, and the French Revolution has been going on now for about ten years. Uh, so he and a couple of his uh close pals staged a coup on November ninth against the government. Now, this is not the monarchy. This was the new French constitutional government, and they were already super crazy. So taking them over wasn't really that hard. But um he and his pals named themselves the Consuls of France. However, uh Napoleon will betray those who helped in uh conspire against the constitutional government. And he makes himself his own consul alone, but then will later crown himself Emperor of all France.
Yeah, so and and let me just stop you there for a second. That group that he is with is known as the Directory. Um, well, like, the Directory actually was kind of this executive group within the National Assembly um that they invite him to join because they want to. Democracy has been discredited. This is just after the Reign of Terror. Robespierre has just been executed. France is still reeling from, you know, like the the excesses of of democracy, so to speak. And so um it's it's a perfect time for someone to come in and say, I'm gonna be law and order. I'm gonna establish, you know, kind of a sense of safety and 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 whatnot. But what you just said there, where he says, I am go, I am making myself Emperor of France, that's gonna be a hard sell to people in France who are all about democracy. Uh, so how does he, how does he sell that? Um, and and people to accept him?
He was for the French Revolution. Uh, he created a whole bunch of uh different schools for universal education. So he basically um, he was, he was pretty rich, I'm pretty sure. And he had a whole bunch of different schools built so that everyone had access to education, and he gave a vast more freedom to the common people.
And and he's like.
Introduced new vic- new civic codes.
Right. So the Napoleon's Code, which is going to be like no more, you know, tr- what treatment for one group, the noble class, which is different from treatment for another group, the everybody else. Everybody gets the same treatment, which was like a very popular idea. But he's like, let's take these ideas and spread them across Europe. Let's, let's liberate the rest of Europe from their monarchs. So he is able to become a monarch in essence by selling himself as the liberator of people from other monarchs. He's like, I have to be in charge. I have to be the emperor because uh we we gotta have a stronger central authority to do this. But really, I'm with you guys. I'm totally all about democracy. Let's go spread it all over the world. So it was really very clever how he's able to kind of uh manage to um become the emperor in the midst. And and part of it also is people, some people were like a little rattled by, you know, the 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 Reign of Terror and seeing where democracy could go. But go ahead.
Um, sorry, I'm I'm trying to look for the different parts of my notes. A lot of historians do believe that when he took over, this ended the French Revolution, but that's not entirely true. The French Revolution doesn't ever actually have a clear end.
Right.
Um, Napoleon, when he goes out to conquer Europe, he says it's partly because he wants to keep the peace in France and on the continent. So he said, well, I'm basically forced to weaken all of the other countries so that they don't come for France. So he kind of used that as a, as a uh excuse. He says, well, if they're, he weakens them so that he can take them over so that they don't attack him, basically.
Okay. All right, yeah. And that, I think, really kind of, you've hit all the real important points with Napoleon's takeover. So now, suddenly, like, everything changes. Like, I think Cody referred to this earlier when he was talking about the quasi-war. Th- there's a new person in charge. Like, so all previous agreements could now be renegotiated. Um, so we were having all of this trouble with the kind of National Assembly version of the government of France uh with the quasi-war. We were fighting the quasi-war with them. But now we have Napoleon. And Napoleon is a very pragmatic person. So um unless you have anything else, did you have like a quote or anything you wanted to share?
Oh, I do have a a quote from him, but I also have him uh with Russia, but I didn't know if we were gonna go over that later.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have?
Like the whole, the whole thing with his campaigns and the Napoleonic wars, that's like, that that you're you're talking eighteen-twelve. That's gonna actually be in the next unit with um our discussion of the War of eighteen-twelve. That all kind of plays together. So you don't have to worry about all the stuff later with Russia. Uh, but if you have a quote, go ahead and share the quote real quick.
Okay. So Napoleon was a smart guy, and so he was very, very tactical. But he said, you must not fight too often with one enemy, or you will teach him all all your art of war. So I thought that that was really interesting.
And as far as is military strategists, though, Napoleon is is a giant. I mean, he is, he is, he is one of the greatest military strategists to ever live. Uh, Nick, I saw your hand was up earlier. Sorry, we we were in the midst of a discussion there. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I was going to, I I was originally going to ask more about the quasi-war. I was just gonna um ask why it was called the quasi-war in the first place because I guess that's never like explicitly stated.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, the the definition of the word quasi is like, sort of, you know, like, i- it's not quite a war, but it's sort of a war. So it's it's a quasi-war. So that's that's really where the the name comes from. Uh, but yeah, good question. All right. So uh that takes us to the Convention of eighteen hundred, which is Trinity.
Yes.
Trinity. Go ahead and and tell us like about the negotiation of the end of the um uh the quasi-war.
So the Convention of eighteen hundred or the Treaty of Montefrontaine ended the quasi-war between France and the US. Basically, this detached the US from its original alliance of seventeen seventy-eight with France and reestablished a new treaty, the Treaty of Morten Fontaine.
Skew, go ahead.
Mortifontaine. Um, this new treaty confirmed the principle of free trade and free goods between the two countries. However, it failed to address the issue of compensation demanded by American ship owners for losses suffered during the quasi-war. So as a result, it was originally signed on September thirtieth eighteen hundred, but it was not approved until December of eighteen oh one.
Okay. So, right. And and this just is like, we have a brand-new, you know, person in charge. So Talleyrand suddenly is much nicer to us. He manages to stay on as Foreign Minister even after, you know, his earlier, you know, uh kind of indiscretions uh which led to the quasi-war. Uh, and um that basically reestablishes good relationships um with uh with France. And you can see our our three guys that we sent over there to negotiate that. All right. Um, one of the big slave rebellions that takes place during uh this time is happens in the state of Virginia under a guy named Gabriel Prosser. Gabriel Prosser was um a a slave who had worked as a blacksmith and um had learned how to read and write. And he became very well-versed in the Bible. And kind of his whole philosophy developed out of Israel um being in captivity, being in slavery in Egypt, and and basically being led to freedom by God. And he began to kind of, he felt like he was like a modern-day Moses. Like, he was going to deliver his people from slavery. And he began to meticulously plan for a slave rebellion. So this was going to um include the raising of a slave army, taking over Richmond, and killing all whites except for, and this is funny, Methodists, Quakers, and Frenchmen, all of whom he felt were not pro-slavery and therefore didn't deserve to die. Um, so Prosser was going to strike on the night of August thirtieth eighteen hundred. And um he had made all the preparations and he had like gotten all of these slaves to to agree to rise up and take arms. But there was a torrential downpour that evening um that actually kept his army from fully organizing. And um uh a slave who had developed some affection for his master and didn't want him to die had told him uh to to, you know, basically get out of the area and prepare. And that master, realizing what this meant, had contacted the governor of Virginia, James Monroe, and said, uh, I I believe you need to call up the militia because I believe there's going to be a slave rebellion. And so Monroe dispatched the Virginia militia to defend the capital city of Richmond. And so when the slave army finally did get together and attack Richmond, um the uh the white population there was was prepared. Uh, and uh Prosser and thirty-five of his followers were hanged after the slave army was defeated. Um, there was a similar but much larger revolt in uh Louisiana in eighteen eleven um with five hundred slaves under the slave Charles Deslandis, um which met with a similar fate. So that is uh Gabriel Prosser's slave rebellion. And um it's it's one of the big slave rebellions in our country's history. And uh again, when we're looking at American history from the minority point of view, this is a, this is a big moment. This is where slaves rise up and try to get their freedom. And even though the slave rebellion is put down, um this is a big moment. Uh, because i- i- it's basically where they're saying the system is horrible, it's unfair, it's wrong, and we're gonna fight, and we're not gonna just take this anymore. So again, uh because of these kind of things, uh the prohibition on reading and writing among slaves was was even more strictly enforced afterwards. Um, just as some cultural notes, um early American literature uh is not like, we don't have a real robust and vibrant American literature kind of because we're so influenced by European society. We're kind of seen as the rustic sidekicks of of Europeans who are much more civilized than we are. Um, but the first American novel, uh The Power of Sympathy, is written by William Hill Brown. Um, and and again, very, very tied to European traditions, but it is put in an American setting. And then Charles Brockin- Brocton Brown, um who was a lawyer by trade originally, joined the Friendly Club in New York, which was dedicated to the discussion of forward-thinking ideas about, you know, e- everything from the liberation of women uh to to other topics. But Mary Woolstonecraft over in um Britain had written uh some powerful words about how women would be the intellectual equals of men had it, if it were only for the fact that they had not um gotten the education that they deserved. So she was kind of the first great feminist rebel over in in Europe. Um, along with an a lady who uh was killed in the in the Reign of Terror named Olymp de Gouges um uh in France. But um Brown's first novel, Alcuan, A Dialogue, uh was published in seventeen ninety-eight, and it explored the relationship between men and women in marriage and criticized the restrictions that were placed upon women. So there are some forward-thinking people that are kind of questioning some of the traditions. Yes, Zach. Zach, I see your hand.
Um, so did this, um, did the book um inspire, uh, I guess, right, act, rights activists, activism in the um, Americas for women?
Question, but really, the first great American women's rights activists aren't going to really get their start until a little later. Um, and so uh Elizabeth Cady Stanton is really the first great towering women's rights fr- figure in America. And she is heavily influenced, not by Alcuan, uh a dialogue, but by the writings of Mary Woolstonecraft um over in Britain, which do kind of, you know, have this revolutionary effect and 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 kind of get a a feminist movement going in uh Europe as well, uh where women are very much in the domestic sphere uh i- in in a very similar fashion to what is happening in America. i- in, in a very similar fashion to what is happening in America, especially as the Industrial Revolution takes hold in cities. So, um, that's an excellent question, uh, but, uh, we don't really have a, a, a large kind of influence by these particular novels, but it is important to note that they are at least addressing the question.
So it was just like, uh, I guess, an example of the first, one of the first pieces of American literature?
Right, so these are, like, we don't really have our own kind of, um, cultural glitterati yet, so to speak, I guess you could say. Um, we don't have our, our, a lot of leading lights, uh, as, 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 as literature. Like, people don't read American authors, they read European authors. So, um, th- this, this is kind of the very, very beginnings of, of, um, what will want, later become kind of, uh, an independent and separate cultural phenomenon, which, you know, will be American literature. But it's in its very, very early stages right now, and of course, it's overshadowed, uh, by, you know, comparison to the great authors of Europe, you know? I mean, and Europe is still in the midst of the Enlightenment, and, you know, all of these great ideas are being discussed, and people in America are still very interested in kind of that continuing discussion, because it all plays into the politics of Europe with the French Revolution and the ideas of the Enlightenment being spread now by Napoleon. Um, so, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll be coming back to this in a little while.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And then, um, just kind of, uh, like, uh, an overview to kind of sum things up. Um, uh, early American society is shaped by a number of forces, okay? So, people still remember the revolution. There are a lot of Revolutionary War veterans who are very, very influenced by their experiences during the war. They're still, uh, you know, it is still very fresh in people's minds. Um, and so, um, really, the, 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 kind of the experiments in, like, various forms of democracy are done at the state level. Um, and so, white men, you know, who can vote? You know, that was a state decision. Uh, a lot of people, you know, kind of wanted it to be the leading citizen, so they, they, they added property requirements into kind of who would be allowed to vote. Um, and Southern society really is very aristocratic, it's dominated by those, those rich planters, yeah, faith.
You said that the states basically controlled, like, who could vote? So does that mean that if a state wanted to, they could have basically just said, "Yeah, women can vote too." They just didn't because of, uh, how society had deemed women to, like, not have political competence?
Yes, and that's an actually an excellent question, it's an excellent legal question as well. Um, no state allowed women to vote by state law. So the only possibility would be that a new state would come into the Union that would allow women to vote. But, in order for a new state to get into the Union, it has to be approved by what body? What legislative body has to approve it?
Congress?
Congress, right. And is Congress going to be, with, with the existing states already kind of represented there, is, are they gonna be disposed to allowing women to vote?
Probably not.
No, so like, if you wanted to enter the Union and you had that in your state constitution, if you were kind of ahead of your time, so to speak, and forward-looking, you would probably have to delete that out. Um, and, uh, we'll actually be talking about this as we talk about various states coming into the Union, some of which will be way ahead of their time in terms of voting rights. Um, and there will actually be rejected by Congress, and Congress will say, "No, you can't come in." And they will have to take out some things that Congress considers to be a, a step too far in those directions. So, um, yeah. So, society, I mean, again, you have to remember, uh, if you're a minority, if you are, if you are black, uh, American society is, 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 from your point of view, is, is, is not a pleasant thing at all, okay? Because you're, you're living in the midst of slavery. Um, if you're Native American, uh, it's not a very nice place either, because you have no rights, you're not a citizen, you're considered an enemy. Um, if you are, um, a woman, uh, you, you really have no rights. Men kind of control everything. Uh, men could put women in insane asylums, uh, if they, you know, fought with them too much. It was always a weapon that husbands had against their wives. Uh, so, it's, it's really a, a, uh, a society of white men. It's just how many white men, uh, are allowed to participate. So in the North, more, it's, it's more egalitarian, more white men are allowed to participate, but they do still discriminate against poor white men by saying you have to own property in a lot of those places. In the South, it's very aristocratic. You have these, these rich landowners who own these large plantations, and they dominate Southern legislatures. So, um, the Southern legislatures always passed laws that favored the kind of keeping slaves, you know, in their place, um, et cetera. Now, just in terms of migration, um, the migration into the United States from Europe does slow down dramatically in the early decades after Independence, but the forced immigration of African slaves actually picks up dramatically, because we did mention this in passing when we were discussing the Constitution, but we knew, I, I did wanna underline it now. Um, the Constitution says, and this is a compromise between the Northern and Southern states on the issue of slavery, um, that the international slave trade will be banned, uh, after eighteen oh nine. So, like, and, I'm sorry, so eighteen oh eight would be the last year that we would allow slaves to be imported from other places. And after that, there were no more slaves, uh, that would be allowed to be imported. Why would Southern states agree to that? Like, what in the world would, like, make it so Southern states would be okay with that compromise?
They already had enough slaves existing in the states to reproduce, that they didn't need to import more slaves?
Boom, yes, and Ethan, did you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing. They're trying to import as many as possible so they could have a steady genetic pool to reproduce them with.
Right, so they were, there were enough slave children being born, uh, that they kind of had a, a, a generation that was, quote, "graduating into work," uh, on, on, that would, they, they could be sold. Uh, that was, that was, you know, they were, they were being bred, um, uh, unfortunately, and, and oftentimes slave owners would deliberately force certain slaves that didn't even like each other to, uh, have sex in order to breed children that they, you know, wanted with certain traits that they, they wanted. So, again, it's an incredibly inhuman and awful, uh, kind of situation for the slaves themselves, um, being treated like animals, um, faith.
Um, I was just going to say that they probably, with all the slave rebellions that were happening, they didn't want people from other societies to come back in, because, uh, they figured possibly that if the slaves that they were gonna have would be born into slavery, that, um, that would be all that they knew, and they wouldn't wanna, like, fight to be free or anything like that?
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent point, uh, to add to that. And, and also, uh, it was just harder to, um, to teach someone the language when they didn't know it. And those, there was a process, um, and to have, you know, enough kind of young people coming up through the ranks, so to speak, and, and being, uh, uh, made into these, this, this next useful generation of slaves each year, there's kind of this new, quote, "graduating class," I guess you could say, um, that really just, you know, like, is, 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 the Southerners are like, "We don't want, um, these, we, we don't need these outside influences coming in anymore. We, we have a system that is set up the way we want it set up, and we're, we're kind of training people from childhood," which is another thing that we're gonna discuss when we get to slavery, is kind of the psychological wounds, um, of the system that are put upon children, like, as they grow, and as they become, you know, kind of, uh, you know, adults, like, just the years of, of watching people get, you know, like, beaten and whipped violently over little offenses and kind of what that does to your psyche as you grow. Um, you know, so, again, just an incredibly inhuman and awful system. Uh, and so, next unit, we're gonna really dive, we're gonna do a deep dive into slavery and, and really kind of look at, at what that looked like in people's lives. Um, because it is something that is very important for us to remember and understand. It's a part of our history that doesn't get the attention that it deserves. So, um, that is our kind of early republic society. Uh, and again, it is important to note that the Quakers are, are kind of the leading rebels against the slave system. And they, um, uh, basically were, um, starting what we call abolitionist societies in cities in the North. Um, but there were slaves, uh, in northern cities, like, they're, like, slavery wasn't encouraged, it was banned in some states, but it wasn't like, the, people could travel with slaves and, and slaves were present, and there were sometimes household slaves. Uh, so there were differing degrees of bans on slavery in northern states, and it wasn't like this monolithic type of thing. So, um, uh, thank you, everybody, for staying, sticking around for the, a little extra time to kind of, you know, finish that out. And, uh, I will see you all, uh, when we get back. Um, and, yes, Zach?
I have just like an AP Euro class question I'd like to ask when, like, later.
Okay, that's cool. So, um, just remember that we are planning on having the test when we return, so I'm gonna be sending out emails about that. Just, you know, study that study guide, uh, and again, if you don't have the greatest test, you have the entire quarter to make up points, and there will be a system for making up points. Um, but, uh, it, it's, it, like, it's gonna be a multiple-choice test, and we're getting you used to. I'm, I'm really just checking to see, do you, do you know the things? Like, I, that's more my focus, is, I'm not trying to, like, kill you with, like, AP-level stuff. There will be some AP-level questions, but a lot of the questions will be just, if you know it, like, if you've, if you've listened to the Zoom calls and you've been present in class and you, you, you've paid attention, you're fine. Like, you'll, you'll, um, you, you know, you'll be able to get a lot of those. So it's just a kind of a knowledge check as well, um, to make sure people aren't just tuning me out and, you know, playing video games when they're on remote or whatever. Um, so, yes, faith? Faith?
Uh, I was just gonna say, sorry, um, aren't we turning the packets in when we come back?
And, and that's gonna be in the email that I send out to everybody, but, um, the notes packet, which will, you will have to have at least some main ideas written down by, by every slide, that will be due on the day of the test. Um, so, I will, I will make sure that I send that out to you guys and let you, let you know.
Will we be allowed to use it on the test, or no?
No.
Ah, dang it.
No, uh, unfortunately, uh, yeah, that will not be possible. I will actually be grading them and putting them in the book while you guys are taking your test, so. Um, yeah, but, uh, yeah, just make sure, because that is worth a significant number of points. So like, if you have a zero for it, 'cause you haven't been taking notes this whole time, that'll definitely be, it won't be good, uh, so to speak. But we are done, so Zach, if you have your question, go ahead, uh, everybody else, you feel free to log out.
Okay, so I had done some, like, extra class reading about the Spanish Civil War, and when we were talking about Napoleon, the Napoleon's rise to be the emperor of France and Franco's rise to be the dictator of Spain sound really similar, where it's like the monarchy falls apart, and then like the more liberal group comes in, and then that kind of falls apart. So then the, so then like the general that kind of had been pushed to the side comes back and takes over everything?
Right, 'cause like, uh, in, in, uh, the Spanish Civil War, uh, there's actually like a little war going on in Spanish Morocco called the Riff War. Uh, and, um, it, like, the, so, he, Franco was actually down there dealing with the Riff War and, uh, kind of gains, you know, popularity as this, this kind of pro-patriotic, pro-nationalist kind of guy for fighting in the colonies. And in a similar fashion, you have, uh, you know, Napoleon down in Egypt, kind of fighting to try to take one of the principal, um, British colonies away from the British, uh, and, and turn it into a French colony, which he does succeed in doing, uh, actually, uh, but it won't last for very long. So, uh, I think that there, like, there are some strong parallels to the rise of, because it's also a, like, a revolt against, like, a radical liberalism on the left. Uh, so I, 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 I agree, I concur with your, um, with your characterization there, that, uh, that the two do have some striking similarities. Uh, did you see anything else that was similar beyond what I mentioned there?
Oh, yeah, just kind of, um, no, that was kind of it, I just think it's that, those were funny, and, I mean...
Oh, your, your voice is kind of, uh, I think you're, it, it broke up there, I couldn't understand what you're saying. And, I'm not here...
I guess the key difference between those is that Franco... Okay, maybe?
Uh, okay, yeah, your, your voice in and out there, but, uh, your key, you, I heard you said there would be a key difference that Franco what? And then I couldn't hear what you said.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, my internet just went out there for a second. Um, I think, I guess, the key difference would be that Napoleon kind of went on to try to conquer Europe and Franco because of kind of the world powers that play at the time stayed confined to Spain.
Right.
I think it's one of those really funny instances where history repeats itself, and it's not even like that far relatively apart, it's like a century. So like, you know, I think it's really interesting that you could, you could kind of predict what was gonna happen.
And it is, yeah, and I think that is an excellent point. Like, when you study history, you can actually kind of see these patterns reemerge, and you're like, "Oh, I've seen this before, and I know what's gonna happen." And you can also, you, it almost gives you the ability to kind of predict, you know, the future to a certain extent, because things do have a tendency to follow certain patterns, logical kind of cause-and-effect-type patterns. Um, but of course, there's always the human factor, the, you know, the, the power of the individual to make a different choice, so to speak. But, yeah, it was very interesting, Zach, I, 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 I think that's an excellent kind of parallel there. Cody, what was your question?
Um, so I had a question about the test. Will it be like, uh, one question per slide or multiple questions per slide?
It'll be, um, that, like, so the, the way I've arranged it is, there's going to be probably somewhere in the range of seventy-five questions. There might be a little more or a little less, uh, but that's generally kind of like the target. And they're going to be arranged around standards. So, in your study guide, if you look, there's a, like, some standards have a lot of slides, and some standards have a few slides. Now, for the standards that have a lot of slides, I am gonna try to ask more questions. But, generally speaking, the, the, the slides are going to, it's not gonna be a question per slide. It'll be more like, I'll try to include several slides in, in a question. So I'm, I am looking for relationships, like, cause and effect, you know? I'm, I'm looking to see, do you know what happened, but also do you understand how things affect each other? Because this is the kind of stuff that they want you to do on the AP. And again, I'm not going to overdo it the first time around especially, um, because there are harder-level questions and there are easier-level questions. The, the harder-level questions will be only kind of sprinkled in on this test. There will, there will be only a smattering of those. Um, but as we, as we go through the year, you're gonna get more of them, just to get you used to the AP, because the AP is going to be all those kind of questions. And, 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 you know, my job is to prepare you, so that when you take the AP, you are able to, to do well. Um, but I am also under, I'm completely understanding that, like, you know, for a lot of people, this is something that takes time to get used to, and it's not, I don't, I, I understand that you want to, you know, have the ability to get the grade that you want. So I'm not going to deny you that opportunity. I'm going to make it where, even if you have a bad day, even if you have, you know, um, some struggles, you can still make up points. So, um, does that answer your question? Did you, did you have anything further that you were kind of wondering? I mean, I, I, I do want you to, like, actually study the packet, like, you should, yeah. So, 'cause, um, that packet is actually way shorter than all of the chapters you would have to do, that you would have to know in the book, if you were kind of doing the textbook version of what you would have to do to prep for a test like that. So, the, the packet's already kind of like the Cliff Notes version. So, consider that like, an entire quarter's worth of knowledge, um, but the important highlights. Like, so instead of reading like a fourth of the textbook, you're only doing that, that packet, which is a lot less, if you just look at like, the little blocks of writing that are on those three slides per page. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, um, Olivia, what, what was your question?
Um, it was about the packet. Um, for some slides, I didn't write notes, because I felt like the, like the paragraphs in this slide kind of explained it. So, would that still mean that I have to, like, write, like, does every, does every slide have to have notes on it, technically?
Technically, yeah, there, there needs to be a minimum of one main idea per slide. So, yeah, so just go ahead and just, you know, come, kind of come back and just give me like a main idea. It does not have to be in a sentence, it can be in a phrase. Um, it doesn't have to be real extensive, but as long as I'm seeing that you're taking that information, kind of processing it and boiling it down, that's what I'm looking for. Um, it doesn't have to be real extensive, but as long as I'm seeing that you're taking that information, kind of processing it and boiling it down, that's what I'm looking for. And then Faith?
I was just gonna ask how the question was gonna be formatted. Are there, are there gonna be like free response questions or multiple choice or?
We are, you you're going to take the equivalent of like, all the AP stuff each quarter, but I break it up. Like, so you'll have a big multiple-choice test, which is equivalent to what you do on the AP, but then you'll also have an essay, but I don't necessarily make the essay right at that time. Like, you've already done kind of a DBQ, uh, you may do an FRQ a little later on, but I kind of try to spread it out, so it's not all at once, so to speak. Um, so like, if you have a class period where we're doing kind of this big test, it'll be, it'll be the multiple-choice area. That's gonna be dedicated to the multiple choice there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Alright, so uh, looks like everybody is kind of logging off, so I will end the meeting for today and um, see you guys after break.
Alright, have a good day.
Two.
Bye-bye.